Here you go.
Talk to Doctor out of the line.
Yep.
No one can do that?
No one. You notice it's coming?
You ever seen a bad movie?
Yeah, we need another pin. Here's my extra.
Good evening. Buenas noches. Tonight, we have a full school board meeting, but first, let's have Reynal Cozy from Carter High School, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
You guys, please remove your hats and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Mr. Islam, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes. Thank you, President Montez. In closed session, the Board of Education's appointed the following employees effective July 1, 2015. Carla Guzman as assistant principal. Janice Bush as assistant principal. Albardo Camarena as assistant principal. Joseph Tumarsili, assistant principal. I hope I said it right. I apologize if I... Bernice Gutierrez as assistant principal. Tina Lingenfelder as assistant principal. And next, Owen Ross as assistant principal. The roll call board was 5-0. Thank you.
Next, do we have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We will now be... The time is 7:20?
Thank you.
And next, we'll go on to, we'll be reconvening open session and we go on to adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll begin with presentations and we'll go ahead and start with District Student Advisory Committee, DSEC, presentation. Take it away, student board member, Marisol.
Thank you. So I'd like to bring up to the podium a few of our DSEC students and I was wondering if the board doesn't mind if I could stand with them?
Not at all.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Ed Ortez and I'm the proud DSEC representative from Rialto High School. And on behalf of the 23 DSEC representatives we have, I would like to thank the Board of Education and the Associate Superintendents for all the time and support that you guys have given us and for allowing us the opportunity to proudly represent our schools here at the district meetings. And not only for the DSEC representatives, but also for all the 26,000 students that we have here in the Rialto Unified School District. So I would like to thank you for all that. And... And we have thank you cards for you guys from the DSEC students.
That is a bunch of good-looking people. Thank you so much.
So at this time, I would like to hand it off to my peer, Janay Wilson, for a presentation.
Good evening, honorable board members, interim superintendent Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. I'm Janay Wilson, ASB president at Eisenhower High School. But today, I'm here to represent 23 DSEC students in honor of a request that we'd like to make to you. As you may know, every year, DSEC students try to give back to the district to recognize all the district does for its students. For years, the West Wing in the district office was referred to as the Central Office and now it's currently called the West Wing. It seems to be a trend that the district keeps getting better. So we all come to you to ask that we rename the West Wing to the Mercy Hall, which represents Myler, Eisenhower, Rialto, and Carter. And the Y stands for youth, which is all of us. We thought this would be a good name because even the Rialto middle schoolers will one day get to experience one of these fantastic high schools. However, we wanted to give you options, so another name we thought of was Scholar Central. Thank you for your time and though we may not be here when you make your final decision, we'd like to thank you in advance for all you have done and all you will do for the Rialto Unified School District.
Thank you. Let's give one more round of applause for the DSEC students. Next, we go to recognition of RUSD scholarship recipients. And I would like our very own Vice President, Ms. Nancy O'Kelly, to do us all the honor in presenting these for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Montez. Good evening.
Good evening.
For over 12 years, the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education has sustained a wonderful tradition of awarding scholarships to students of our dedicated employees who work tirelessly each year to help our students reach their maximum potential. This year, we have 10 Board of Education Employee Recognition Scholarships valued at $1,000 each that will be awarded to RSD staff members, children. When I call your name printed on this check, please come up to collect your scholarship fund. If you're not present, I get to keep it. We would also like to add a personal touch here, so when you come up, please feel free to tell the viewing audience who your parent is and just where they work in our district. Thank you. First, John Paul Abadines. I hope I've said it right. John Paul Abadines? Oh, I know this person very well. Marisol Angulo? There you go. Tell who your parent is and where they work in the district. Oh, this is... Okay, alright. Okay, do you want to say thank you to anybody?
Thank you to the board, the district, anyone, everyone. I'd like to thank my sister for coming and thank you so much.
Marisol has been a blessing on the board. Karri Bush. Congratulations, Karri. You're doing so well. I'm pleased to meet you. Here, do you have something you want to say?
I'd like to thank the board for the scholarship and my mother is Janice Bush and she works at Rialto Middle School and I attend Carter High School.
Yelena Camacho Ramos. Reynal Cozy. Congratulations.
I just want to say, on behalf of the Board of Education, everyone who participated in awarding me this scholarship in the amount of $1,000, I'm truly blessed and honored and grateful for all that you do. You are the future and you keep us going and may God bless you to continue the support and effort that you guys put into this. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, Kevin Ceballos. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank the board and thank you for this opportunity. It's a great honor and I'd also like to thank my family and my grandma for always supporting me through everything I do. So, thank you.
Sabrina Delgadio. Congratulations.
Hi, I just want to thank the board for this $1,000 scholarships. My name is Sabrina Delgadio. I go to Wilmer Mina Carter High School and my mom is a lead nutrition service worker at KC Elementary. And I want to thank my mom for all her support and love, especially because she wasn't able to get a job up until recently because she spent so much time helping me in my school career. So thank you, Mom.
Karli Elsman.
Hi, I would like to thank the board so much for this opportunity. It opens many doors and I can never thank you enough. And I would like to thank my parents, Tammy Elsman and Stanley Elsman, for everything they've done. They've definitely helped me a lot and I would never have been here if it weren't for them. So thank you.
That is definitely a true statement. Daniel Garcia. Congratulations.
I just want to say I'm very humbled by this opportunity. Thank you for investing in the future of our education and thank you for having that vision. And I'd also like to thank my family. My mom works at Morris Elementary as an instructional aide. So I just, I'm very blessed to be here. Thank you.
Hannah Goodwin. Congratulations.
I would like to thank the board. It really feels like you're investing in my future and it really helps me out a lot. I also want to thank my mom, Susan Goodwin. She's a third grade teacher at Garcia Elementary and just thank you for all your support too. Thank you.
Edward Aleva. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank the board for giving me this. My mother is Lizette Mariscow and...
Veridiana Murillo. Congratulations.
I would also like to thank the Board of Education for everything that you guys have done for the Rialto Unified School District and for giving us this scholarship because you guys are truly investing in everyone's future. Y también quiero agradecer a mi madre y a mi padre por todo lo que nos han dado y por ayudarnos en todo y por siempre estar ahí para ayudarnos. And God bless everyone.
Andrew Rashid. Elias Rex. Congratulations.
I'd just like to say thank you to the board for allowing me this award and all my other colleagues. And I would also like to say thank you to my mom because without her, I wouldn't be here and I know that she works really hard. Her name is Maria Franco. She works at the Rialto Unified School District and I love you, Mom.
Christian Valier Fuentes. Congratulations.
I would like to thank the board. I'm very grateful and humble for this and not only for this, but for... But thank you for all the hours you put into our city to try and improve our education. It means a lot to us. And I would also like to say that I'm very proud to have represented the city of Rialto, both academically and athletically throughout my four years of high school. Thank you so much.
Rebecca Viegas. Congratulations.
Thank you. I would like to thank the school board. You don't know how much this means to me. I really appreciate you guys doing this for me. I'd like to thank my two friends right here and then also the people who I owe everything to, my two parents and my little sister.
Ashley Willis. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank the board for this scholarship and my mom's Jessica Delarosa works at Preston Elementary.
I'd like to try again for John Paul Abadines. Yelena Camacho Ramos or Andrew Rashid? They are apparently not here, but I would like to congratulate all of the recipients. The board is so proud and so happy to do this. We'd love to do it 10 times what we're doing because we have so many kids that are so deserving. But you all are our future and we're making an investment in that, so thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Next, we go on to Retired Teachers Association to present grants to teachers. I'm sorry. No, no, go ahead. No, go ahead, I'm sorry. I jumped one, but we'll get it after you. Please, please, please go ahead, proceed. Please don't be mad with me. We just had to get up and sit down like 20 times right now.
Good evening. I am the current president of the California Retired Teachers Association, Division 90. We have worked this year raising funds to give 17 grants to teachers from the three districts, Rialto, Colton, and Fontana, which we represent. Thank you for allowing us time in your meeting to introduce the grant recipients from Rialto. First, I'd like to present the members of the Grant Committee who read 79 proposals to make their selections. Chairman of the committee is Dale Van Kamp. Other members are Daisy Robinson, John Knipple, Beverly Knipple, and Randy Better. And now, we'd like to introduce each teacher who received a $250 grant to use in their classroom and tell a brief summary of their plan. As I call your name, would you please come to the front and stay up here with us while everyone else is introduced? First, Rod Campbell, sixth grade, Rialto Middle School teacher. He will use his grant to purchase car kits so that his students can construct a workable derby car. And he is going to share his grant with Lydia Memes Williams, sixth grade, Rialto Middle School teacher. And she will purchase a digital scale and a three-lane track timer for a Pinewood Derby race. So they'll each get half of the grant and share it. Next, Susan Dix. Susan is a fourth grade teacher from Kelly Elementary who will purchase physical education equipment to be shared by the entire fourth grade physical education program. Sharon Hanke. Sharon is a third grade teacher at Garcia Elementary and she will purchase new recorders for all third grade students to use next year. Next, Todd Noden. Todd has a big job. He teaches grades nine through 12 at Eisenhower High School. He is an instrumental music director for 120 students and he intends to buy enough replacement supplies so that all students may participate with functioning instruments. Next, Melissa Sanbrano Ramirez, fourth grade teacher from Simpson Elementary. She will purchase rock kits, mineral kits, geodes, and rock cycle kits for the entire fourth and fifth grade classes at her school. Next, Susan Tarbutton. She's a fourth grade teacher from KC Elementary who will buy little bits electronic modules that snap together to create a circuit code to create projects. These will improve digital literacy and allow students to think creatively and collaboratively. Finally, Tanya Williams-McCall. Tanya teaches sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at Frisbee Middle and will use the funds to teach sewing to her multiple handicap life skills students. She is also the only teacher awarded grants three years in a row. The first year, she used it for cooking equipment and the second year to buy diffusers for classroom lighting. We'd like to thank all of the teachers for attending the meeting tonight and wish you best wishes for the exciting year ahead. And now, we have a certificate for the board members. Thank you.
Let's give one more round of applause to the Retired Teachers Association and the teachers that were awarded. Next, I've asked Mr. Islam to help us with the recognition of parent volunteers.
Thank you, Mr. Montez. Rialto Unified School District Parent Institute held its successful annual volunteer recognition award ceremony on Thursday, April 24, 2015, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the Palm Avenue Bistro. In honoring many deserving parent volunteers who have put in hundreds of hours at various RUSD school sites throughout the school year, our DAC and DLEC parents were also recognized. Unfortunately, due to human error, some names were called and parents were not being informed or didn't have knowledge of the event and then did not have an opportunity to collect their certificate. Tonight, I would like to publicly thank these parents and also make sure they receive their certificate for the positive contributions they make at their school sites. When I call your name, please come up and receive the same certificate that was presented at the annual voluntary recognition award ceremony. Jackie Arbeda. Where's Saida? Saida, we're not taking pictures?
Can we get one? Can we get one, please?
These are the parents put many, many hours and I recognize every day is their love for the students and our community and our school. This is awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Next, Ruth Martinez. The next, Gabriela Aguler Madrid. The next person is Maria Estrada. That's all.
Just want to make sure, did we miss, did we miss any? Did we get all of the parents here tonight? Okay, we're good. Thank you, Mr. Islam. Thank you. Next, we go to a presentation by our very own board member, Mr. Joseph Ayala. He will be awarding his key to the district.
For those of you who don't know, this is a tradition we started about five years ago. Each year, each board member will give the key to the district, to an employee, a parent, somebody that's well-deserving and deserves more than we can offer, but the highest award that we can possibly give and honor a person here at Rialto Unified School District. And with that being said, every now and then, we come across people who make a contribution to the life of a child. That goes above the realm of what is expected. That person who has the capacity to devote their time and motivate a child's potential to his or her maximum potential can come in the form of a parent, sibling, relative, or friend. In my scenario, this person came to me in the form of a beloved classroom teacher. And would you join me up here, Mrs. Kim Morris? There's a paragraph that was written here that I've already recited, so you heard it at the beginning. So I'm gonna move on. Mrs. Kim Morris is a special needs teacher from Eisenhower. Mrs. Morris was born in Waco, Texas. She graduated from University High School in Waco, Texas, and attended North Texas State. I think you have some Texas fans here somewhere. We're, he's not here, right? He stepped out, okay. She completed her bachelor's degree from Cal State San Bernardino in sociology. She also holds a master's degree from Arkansas State University specializing in fourth through twelfth-grade education. Mrs. Morris moved to Southern California in nineteen-eighty-nine. She worked at the Teachers Credit Union and said that whenever she would come into contact with educators in Rialto, they would praise the district. "I was told by so many, so many times by so many teachers, who were my customers at the time, that I should really apply at the district," smiled Mrs. Morris. So in two thousand and three, she did exactly that. Mrs. Morris was hired as a substitute teacher for a year. Then her first full-time teaching job was specializing in emotionally disturbed students at Rialto High School. She also taught ED students at Morgan Elementary School. In two thousand and five, she was transferred to Eisenhower High School. She now teaches US history, world history, and economics in a special-day class at ICH. Do you want to read this part, or you want me to read it for you? Okay, okay, come here, come here. Okay, okay, we may need a third person to hold us up over here, but we're gonna do our best. "I found my calling in life," Mrs. Morris smiled. "I build relationships with my students." We're taking a little break here. I want them to know that they can reach their maximum potential. I look at my students as my kids. I get so much gratification when they achieve. Before anyone can make a difference in the life of a child, you must get the time to get to know them first. It's about relationships. You gotta turn the page. When I was searching to find who would receive my key for two thousand and fifteen, I came in contact with Eisenhower High School parent, we're a family here. Mrs. Victoria Aguilar, are you here?
Yes. Best teacher of the best school and best district. Take care of our children. She doesn't have to do it.
Can I put this down for a minute and say, is this not testimony to a diverse community? Awesome, awesome. She is a genuine altruist, big word. She's loving, caring, trustworthy, person devoted to her profession. She is the kind of person who will leave all her pains behind to take care of her students. You're hearing it. And to make sure their needs are met. Mrs. Morris highly believes and encourages her students. She is truly a role model for others to follow. Eisenhower Principal Scott Sparks, are you here? Come on up and join us. Would you like to read that, or you want me to read it?
If you Googled the word "teacher," dedicated, caring, and all about kids, I am sure Kim Morris's picture would show up. She has a special place in her heart for all her kids. She pushes her SDC students to be successful in everything they do, and she understands that her students need modifications to learn, but that doesn't mean that she has to lower the standards. Ms. Morris understands that her kids will have to compete for jobs and a career, and she wants her kids to be ready for the future.
Life has its way of making it difficult for us. Mrs. Morris was recently widowed. She was married to James Morris, who passed away April thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Morris left behind five sons and eight grandchildren. I love spending time with our grandkids. There's nothing more precious than kids, and that's our number-one priority. On behalf of the Rialto Unified School District, thank you for your dedication to your profession, in which the highest responsibility is developing young minds. You do your job superbly, and we all congratulate and applaud you. Please accept my key. As a small token, my personal appreciation, but on behalf of the board, for a job well done.
I can say something right now. I would like to thank the board, Mr. Ayala, for the key. I'm so honored, I'm so humbled by this. I love doing what I do. My babies, some of them are here, could you guys come up? My babies, come on up. Come on up. This is why, I'm here, this is what I do, this is what I love to do. I love helping them, I love seeing them grow. They tell me, "You're just like my mama." They tell me that all the time. And I just tell them, I'm here, that's what I'm here for. I want them to grow. I want them to make a difference. And I tell them to believe in themselves. I always tell you that, don't I? To believe in themselves and don't let anyone tell them, don't let anyone tell them that they can't do anything, because they can. They can do it. And I'm just so, you know, you guys don't know, I don't do it for this. I do it for them. I do it for these wonderful, wonderful students that are by, behind me. They're my kids, they're our future. I come to work every day, I enjoy doing it, you know? We all have a calling in the life, and my calling was working with these young adults. I want them to grow, I want them to be productive in our society. And that's my goal, to get them there. I love to challenge them, they will tell you that, you know? I tell them every day that they can do it, and they can do it, each and every one of them. And I just want, you know, everyone, everyone to see that every child has potential. Every child has potential. We should not give up on our future, we should not give up on children. We should motivate them, encourage them to do their best at whatever ability they have. Because sometimes, you know, we have to tell them, we have to make them believe. Some of these kids, hey, they will tell me, "Oh, Ms. Morris, I can't." I said, "Yes, you can. Don't tell me you can't do it. Do not tell me you can't, because you can." And then they see that they can do it. And then they go a little farther and a little farther, because they can do it. So we all just have to work together. We all have to work together with all of our students, not just specialists, but all of them in the district. And I just want to thank the board again, Mr. Ayala, for the key. Oh, you're back there, Mr. Ayala, and stuff, the board. Just thank you guys, I'm just so humbled, and I just praise God, thank you.
Okay, and now we are very proud to have President Montes present his key to the district to Ms. Cindy Stone.
Thank you, Vice President, Ms. Nancy O'Kelly. Oh, not that, I'm not that tall. Could I please have Ms. Cindy Stone join me up at the podium? With being one of the largest employers in the city of Rialto, the Rialto Unified School District is enriched with thousands of staff members. Each year, it is a challenging task for board members to select one employee out of so many deserving employees to be the recipient of the key to the district. And it's not only limited to employees, but we tend to, we tend to want to give them to our hard-working staff. This year, my key to the district will go to a person who is not only a proud product of the district, but also a person who impacts the lives of students daily, without having the fanfare glory of being in the forefront. In fact, she, along with her colleagues, often wear aprons, gloves, and hairnets. In her department, they serve an estimated sixty thousand meals per day, which includes breakfast and lunch for our students, for our schools. Ladies and gentlemen, my key to the district will be presented to Ms. Cindy Stone, the Director of Nutrition Services Department. Cindy Stone was born in the city of San Bernardino and raised in Rialto. She attended Henry and Old Watts Elementary School, Rialto Middle School, which was a junior high school back then, at this very school site, this very facility, now known as the Delores Swerte Sister Chavez Center for Education, or as some people refer to it as a PDC, Professional Development Center. She also went to Eisenhower High School. In nineteen ninety-four, Ms. Stone was hired by the district as supervisor for duties in the central kitchen. She served as a supervisor for fourteen years. Then, in two thousand and ten, she was promoted as the Director of Nutrition Services. With a big, huge, cheesy smile, she said, "I love the staff I work with. They're the best." And one of the, and one of the things I can honestly say is Cindy cares about her people. She cares about her staff. Leading, leading a staff of two hundred, Ms. Stone said the best part of her job is simply the kids. You know, my grandmother fed a huge family, and she loved nothing more than to feed, to feed us. And she would always say, "A full stomach is a happy heart." "We are regulated by the USDA, the United States Department of Agriculture, on the types of fruits and vegetables that we have to feed our students," she replied. "There are certain calories and proteins that are mandated that we must provide. But when I observe our students enjoying food, it's a great feeling." And I know what you mean, I like watching my boys eat. They don't mess around, they follow after their father. When she is not working, Ms. Stone enjoys hiking, being outdoors, photography, and serving as a dedicated member of the Putting on the Ritz Fine Arts Gala Committee. She's a single mother of two daughters, Autumn and Sarah, a doting grandmother to a doting grandmother to four grandchildren. Mrs. Stone's job is to also to organize catering food for various district events, including Putting on the Ritz, school grand openings, and dedications, and as most of us know, just recently, tonight, for Dr. Avila's meet and greet. In our careers, we have a lot of successful moments, and we have a lot of challenging moments. But since we are at the Sesar Chavez-Delores Huerta Center for Education, let me please add words of wisdom that the late civil rights activist, Mr. Sesar Chavez, said to strengthen his fight for doing what was always right. He said, "Draw our strength from the very despair in which we have been forced to live. We shall endure." And Cindy Stone amplifies that, that quote. The Rialto Unified School District, under the strong and unyielding leadership of Mrs. Stone, has made great strides in keeping their focus on students and what is in the best interest of students. I applaud your dedication, Mrs. Stone, and ask you to please accept my key to the district, which now belongs to you. Congratulations. And before, and before, before I hand the microphone over for her to say a few words, I, I just want to say that the past districts that I've given to other people and, and all the keys that our board have given, have all been well-deserving. And I usually like to ask who to give my key to. One time, it was for the students who loved Ms. O'Kelly when she was principal. They loved her because she was awesome. So because of the students, I gave it to her. For another person, Mrs. Harper, Jen Harper, I gave her my key. She was only the Director of Gate Research and Data and College Programs and Assessments, and I don't remember how many other things. And she was the hardest-working person. She's one of the, there's many hard-working, but she's one of the many hard-working people in the district. And because the district staff said, "She deserves it," I gave it to her, I agreed with them. Mr. Navo was a principal at Casey Elementary, and his staff loved him. His staff believed in him, and that's why I gave him the key. Mrs. Niva Hayes at Morgan Elementary, retired, longtime kindergarten teacher. The parents told me, "Give her the key." But today, I finally chose someone myself, because I felt that she honestly also deserved to receive one of the highest honors in our district. If, in case you didn't know, she is saving our school district hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of taxpayers' money. And for that, I thank you, and the community thanks you.
Well, I gotta tell you, following Kim Morris is not an easy thing to do. I do want to first thank you so much for the opportunity to serve the students of the Rialto Unified School District. It's not only my calling, but it's my pleasure. I also want to thank President Montez and the entire Board of Education for this acknowledgement. The past five years has been incredibly challenging, not only for me, but my staff. And thank you for confirming that it's okay to do the right thing. Thank you.
One of our other scholarship recipients has arrived, while we've been crying and hugging and everything else. So could I please have Yaleni Camacho Ramos come up here, please? Would you say a few words?
I would just like to thank the board for this opportunity, and I would also like to thank my parents for always supporting me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Next, we go on to... Yes.
Okay. And now we have the delightful pleasure of hearing from President Montez again as he presents the Rialto Host Lions Club recognition.
And I apologize for presenting twice, but I always try to hand these duties on to, to the rest of the board members and Mr. Islam, but we're running out of meetings, we only have one more meeting, and I felt the need to present again to a well-deserving organization, none other than our very own Rialto Lions Host Club. Could you please join me? Now, before I start, I have to disclose that I too am a member of this great club. But that's not why I'm, I'm recognizing them tonight. As board president, as a member of this community, I feel that this club deserves to be recognized for all of the good things that they do in this community, for, for our residents and for our students. And I'll share a few things with you. And by the way, I didn't just join, I've been a member since 2008. Proud Lion, Mr. Montez. In 1947, the Rialto Lions, the Rialto Host Lions Club was incorporated with the mission to serve its communities' less fortunate youth and seniors. And for 68 years, the club, which I am proud to say that I'm a member since 2008, has been fulfilling its service promise. Tonight, on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to honor some of the hard-working and dedicated members of the Rialto Host Lions Club. We're also going to do the Kiwanis, and we're going to do the Rialto Breakfast. So we're going to get everybody, it's time. These members, each year, work tirelessly through fundraising efforts, including the firework booths, to support programs such as the Student Speaker Contest, local scholarships, and providing assistance with various activities serving underprivileged seniors and youth in Rialto. The Rialto Host Lions Club meets at Flip It Cafe, formerly the Big Apple, Rialto-Fontana border, on the second and fourth Monday of each month at 5:30 PM. "We have been providing assistance to children and the elderly for many years," said President Mr. Al Flores. This is Mr. Al Flores, by the way. Mr. Al Flores, a, a Lion Club member for 23 years, said, "One of the projects we hope to work on includes assistance to the hearing and visually impaired. If they are considered low-income and qualify, they can receive cataract surgery at no cost." The club also provides many, many, many eyeglasses for many, many underprivileged students and community members who can't afford those expensive glasses. So as you can observe, these are deserving and service-oriented members of our community. And when I call your name, please receive your official certificate from the Board of Education and myself. I'd like to thank you for your commitment to not only our students, but also our parents and grandparents. Thank you. And we will begin with Lion President Al Flores. Lion Tom McCracken. Lion Donita Jepson. I don't see Lion Ralph Sanders here tonight, but for those of you who don't know, Ralph Sanders is a retired teacher, coach, from Eisenhower and Frisbee. He's not here tonight, but we'll give this to him. Also, Lion Doretta Thesis. Tyce, I'm sorry. Donita's twin sister, who could not be here tonight, but Donita will make sure to get it to her. Lion Richard Ralden. Which couldn't make it, couldn't make it either. Dawn's here tonight, Lion Dawn Martin. Jesse, Lion Jesse Villa Plato. Honorary member, Lion Margaret Braswell. And, and before I continue, I'm almost done, everyone. I just want to let Margaret say a few words for a very special reason, for a very special person. I respect my elders, everyone, so if they ask me to speak, I'm going to let them speak.
This is a great honor for me to accept this on behalf of my husband, who passed away eight months ago. 65 years of being a lion. He loved everything about the Lions, and I want to thank the board for this.
Lion Vice President Tom McCracken. You, you know what, I apologize. I believe we're missing Kathy McCrackens. I am so sorry. I think Tom got two. And I am so sorry, Kathy, but, but we will get it corrected for you, and I will present you Tom's in place of yours. And, and, and before we take a group picture, I, I just would like to ask our, our club president to maybe just say a few things.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody here for attending, and thank the board for the opportunity, and thanks for the recognition. As you know, we do work hard. And basically, we're just, we meet the second and fourth Monday of the month at Flip It Restaurant. More than welcome to, you know, if you're interested in joining, you can get the information from us. And we'll go from there, we're going to close out a new, old year, and Tom McCracken will be coming in as the new president. So we're kicking off the new year right, you know. It's just like you guys, you know, July, July 1st. I'm out, he's in.
One group picture, please. And one more award, one more award from the Congress, Congresswoman Norma Torres to the club. Congressional, special congressional recognition to the Lions Club, Rialto Host, and recognition for your leadership in organizing all of the wonderful events and, and, and service for the club, for the community in Rialto. I added all that extra stuff right there, but these are just recognitions. Thank you, thank you. If you could just shake hands there, please. All right. Item C on the agenda tonight. Public comments. Comments from the floor at this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. I'm going to do first items not on the agenda, then we'll do items, items on the agenda. So if I call your name and your item is not on the agenda, I mean, your item is on the agenda, could you please let me know so I can call you for the second round? I mean, your item is on the agenda, could you please let me know so I can call you for the second round? You know, I, I know of one person that wanted to present tonight, and I'd like to give her the opportunity. She filled out a speaker card on an item not on the agenda, and her name is Brenda Parker.
Good evening, board members, interim superintendent, parents, faculty, students. My name is Brenda Parker, and I am a block captain for the Neighborhood Watch, North End Pepper Neighborhood Watch. Brilliant, tenacity, great, friendly, warm, door always open, firm but kind. Who am I speaking of? Mr. Asundu Agweke. Mr. O. I would like to take this opportunity right now, right, Mr. O, but I needed to say that name. That was important, because we affectionately call him Mr. O. But I would like to take this opportunity on behalf of North End Pepper Neighborhood Watch, and I would like to welcome Mr. O to the podium with me, please. I would like to present Mr. O with a plaque from the North End Pepper Neighborhood Watch, on behalf of the North End Pepper Neighborhood Watch, for his awesome leadership skills and awesome guidance to his staff, for his students at Frisbee Middle School, and the surrounding community. I wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you, and keep up the wonderful good work you're doing at Frisbee Middle School. The community knows this, we recognize you, we praise you, and we thank you.
Another round of applause to Mr. O, Ms. Parker, thank you so much. We have Reagan Spells. Is it Reagan or Regan? Regan, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Good evening.
I wrote, I had a full day, but it was really important for me to come here and share appreciation for Mrs. Thompson. I wrote something down, so it'll be quick. But my name is Reagan Spells, and my twins are in the fourth grade at Henry, and they love Mrs. Thompson. Henry is a Vapa school. I was hoping that she would hear, she was here. Just a quick story. I attended Preston Elementary with Stephen White and Vicky Lawrence and Margaret Barris, and I was their student, and they encouraged reading, and they encouraged art. And I look forward to Fridays when our principal would sit on the stage and sing "The Cat Came Back", and he would also sing "Down by the Bay". Those were my favorite days. And so with my kids, this is their second year at Henry, they are encouraged. They are learning music, they love the arts, and it reminded me of my days in elementary. They're happy to be at a Vapa school. Another quick story, last year I had to home hospital school one of my kids, and this year, he doesn't even wanna be away from home. I meant this year, he doesn't even wanna be away from school. He participated in jazz through the ages, he was in Putting on the Ritz, he was in the Nutcracker, and when he's not feeling well, he sits in the nurse's office and he pops back up, and I have to say, are you sure you can do a full day? And he doesn't, he wants to, because he wants to be at school. So my kids are little performers, and they're big readers, and we attribute that to Mrs. Thompson, and she's doing a really, really wonderful job. So I wanted to thank her and the staff and everything that they're doing. And if you've never been to one of the shows, if you've never been on campus with the Vapa, I've got fifty-nine seconds. Then you should, because the kids are confident, they're scholars. I'm starting to see little talents, some kids that I know of who are kinda shy, who are getting, grabbing the attention, and they're singers and they're readers, and it's, it's really great. It would be nice, I, I was at the school and I was feeling, you know, my elementary days, and I was looking at the stage, and I was thinking it would be great if they had, you know, a place for their costumes, if they had, you know, you know, a different, you know, a nicer stage, but I know that, you know, may come later. I just wanted to let you guys know that it's, it's wonderful having Mrs. Thompson as a, as a principal. She's, she's, she's awesome, and I think that everybody should know that and see what's going on at Henry. And I brought some Henry parents too, to kind of vouch for that, because, because our kids are doing, our kids are doing an awesome job there because of Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Jose Franco.
Good evening, everybody. This is my first board meeting, so really happy to actually see this process. I wanted to talk about an issue that parents have brought to my attention at Fitzgerald Elementary. There was an expansion, four extra classrooms added on the east wing, and those classrooms are currently being used by three teachers with full classrooms, and the other room is a parent room. The thing with that addition, that extension, is that it runs on a separate air conditioning system. The air conditioning, whenever it is on, which is rare, it's not adequate. And so the kids are sitting there in the heat, teachers are sitting there in the heat, and it impedes the learning process. The doors have to be open on both the inside corridor and the outside, so that some sort of fresh air can get into the classroom. The noise from the fans is on. All of that can distract the kid, being hot, having the fan on. And for the parents, the volunteers, it's also an uncomfortable situation to be in. They're taking time out of whatever it is that they do to be at the school, only to be in a room that's stifling and uncomfortable when it's hot. So I would appreciate if the board can make a priority to work with Ms. Jackson. She is aware of the issue, she is trying to go through the proper channels, but it's not getting done fast enough, and our kids are sitting there, our teachers are sitting there, our parents are sitting there. And to me, it's an issue, not every kid hydrates often enough. I would hate to see some sort of kid have some sort of heat-related something or other happen, because they were not prepared for the heat, or the same for the teachers or the parents that are there. So that's my main concern, and I really hope that the board can help me out with this, can help the parents out with that, the students and the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to, that concern to the board. Mr. Franco, Mr. Islam, if we can...
We'll follow up tomorrow.
Thank you. We have Jewel Diamond Taylor. I, I just would like to ask, is this on the agenda or off the agenda item? Okay, I'll get to you guys right now. We're, we're doing not on the agenda items. We have Maria Rodriguez. Is there Maria Rodriguez here tonight? Okay. We'll save that one. We have Luis Jaimez. Luis Jaimez. Okay, in case, in case they come back. Now we'll go on to items, I'm sorry, we have Celia Salaya. Is in the agenda or no on the agenda? Okay.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva, presidente Mr. Montez, superintendente interino Mr. Islam, audiencia.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Islam, and the audience, and Mr. Montez.
Mi nombre es Celia Salaya y soy coordinadora de Amigos Unidos.
And my name is Celia Salaya and I'm a coordinator for Friends, United Friends.
Grupo de apoyo para padres de niños con necesidades especiales.
And this is a group of support for parents that have kids that are with special needs.
Y esta noche queremos agradecerles.
And this evening we would like to give, give you our appreciation.
Por haberle dado la llave del distrito.
For giving the district key to.
A la señora Morris.
To Mrs. Morris.
Los padres de los estudiantes con necesidades especiales.
And the parents of children that have special needs.
Estamos orgullosos de tenerla como maestra.
We are very proud to have her as a teacher.
En nuestro distrito.
In our district.
Usted es un ejemplo en nuestro distrito y en nuestra comunidad.
You are an example in our district and in our community.
Esperamos que las palabras de la señora Morris.
And we hope that the words of Mrs. Morris.
De que todos los estudiantes tienen potencial.
That all the students have a potential.
Hagan eco en otros maestros.
That will bring an echo to all the teachers.
Que nuestros, para que nuestros estudiantes de educación especial.
That our students in special education.
Salgan adelante y no se queden atrás.
That they could move forward and would not be left behind.
Thank you. Estamos orgullosos, mi amor.
We're very proud of Mrs. Morris.
Thank you, Mrs. Salaya, muchas gracias. Next up, next up we have Pastor, Pastor Samuel Casey. He had a leave. Please apologize to the good pastor. I'm sorry, we have a long meeting tonight. Okay. But it was in regards, the subject was in regards to honoring Mrs. Kim Morris, so I'm sure he had good things, nothing but good things to say. Next up, Mrs. Jewel Diamond Taylor.
Good evening to everyone. I'm standing here with Pastor Casey's wife and co-pastor. We are here to acknowledge and to celebrate the passion of your educator, Kim Morris. She's part of our church family, and we are so proud of her, and we would like all of her church family that still remains to stand up, so that she sees the love that is here. And even the New Life Christian Church of Fontana, still remaining, a lot of us had to leave. But we wanted to give you our love, our congratulations, our blessings. We are so proud of you, that in the midst of the storm, you don't look like what you have been through. And we thank God for the passion that you bring to the classroom. We know that many people have a J-O-B, but you have a J-O-Y, and it shows. And we're so honored to witness the district giving you the key, because you give the children the key to their future. And you are a positive example and role model. We just wanna say we love you, and we know that Philip is looking down upon you, and we feel his spirit covering you and loving you, and we just honor you for your resiliency and your strength, because even in the midst of a storm, you came to work because you love the children. When other people would have made excuses or just shut down, it shows that when you have a passion, it can be very therapeutic, and that you truly do love the children, and that you know the success is spelled S-E-R-V-I-C-E, serving. God bless you, and this is...
And I just also wanted to add that, just how much we love you, and we appreciate what you do here in Rialto. And you, you bring that love, not only here in Rialto, but you bring it also to New Life Christian Church in the city of Fontana, and for that, Kim, we love you, and we honor you as well, along with the district. We also want to say that you push those kids as far as they can go. You teach them that they can do and be anything. You buy prom dresses, you buy computers, you offer them everything that they need to be successful in life. When people count them out, you give them a chance, and we honor you, and we say thank you, we love you.
Ms. Morris, did everybody, all your supporters take a picture with you with the key? If not, I suggest they all go up there with you and get another picture for the district website, if that's okay with you. Mr. Ayala, could you please join them? Don't forget that key. Communications Department, district website, please.
And this is Leah Cash from The Brightest Star. I don't have one of the board, one of the yellow slips up there, but very quickly, she has been a board member for the last three years for The Brightest Star. And with that, I'm giving also tribute to how she helps abused and abandoned children, and children that are thriving in foster care in Rialto's Unified School District.
Wow. All her supporters, please get up there. Is that everybody? All right. Thank you again, thank you. Now, now we, now we go on to Terry Wright. Items on the agenda. Going once, going twice? No, no Terry Wright, okay. Next we go on to Mr. Christopher Love.
Good evening, board, attending audience, President Montez, Vice President Kelly, Ms. Walker Clark, as the clerk, and the outstanding members of the board and superintendent in this cabinet, and our incoming superintendent. The last board meeting I came to you with speaking about building bridges, and how Think Together has served the city of Rialto and Rialto Unified School District. I'm now speaking on behalf of my colleagues, the other site coordinators, and what we call program leaders who directly work one-on-one with the students and staff and teachers at our school sites. I want to say that, first of all, we're not qualified to speak about budgets and numbers, but we are qualified to speak about the loss in human capital that can occur. Think Together's been building relationships on cycles. Year-to-year, school site to school site, we've been putting in systems that have been beneficial to our parents, our teachers, and our staff. I can speak personally that I am a Jaguar through and through. Once a Jaguar, always a Jaguar, as Mrs. Harper taught me a long time ago. And a part of that is also being a part of our PBIS team at J Hugh Middle School as well. I want to implore upon the board, at least to this evening, that when you're in your deliberations, private and in public, please understand that Think Together is a calling for some of us. We've chosen to come back to this district that has served us well. For some of us, it's a proving ground to see if we wanna join the craft of educator, the craft of teaching and shaping young minds towards the future. And the proving ground is strong. If they cannot cut the mustard and think together, they're gone pretty quick. So with that being said, I want to just implore upon you about our behavior management systems, our curriculum. Everything else that we use is measurable data and outcomes, and understand the loss in human capital if we are not brought back, because there are parents and there are families that I have bonded with, as well as my staff, that if we're gone, you have to restart the cycles, building those same relationships over and over. It's one thing to deliver curriculum, but it's another thing when a parent comes to my staff and says, "Coach Love, can you help today?" "Coach Love, can you speak to a teacher today?" Or a teacher can say, "Coach Love, can you come to a class..." Or a teacher can say, "Coach Love, can you come to a classroom? Because I don't have a good parent contact number and I know you see that parent after school every day. Can you set up a parent-teacher conference?" I've been in those. It's powerful stuff. So in conclusion, thank you for your time. Thank you for your ears and your consideration, no matter which way you go. But always put the students first, since that is your mandate by the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we go on to public hearing, item D. I apologize. Next, we go on to item three on item C. Comments from Association Executive Board Members. Do we have anyone here from REA tonight?
I put in a slip to talk on an item on the agenda.
I, I don't see them, but go ahead, ma'am, please.
My name is Deb McKenzie. I'm a teacher at Dahlahanna Elementary here in Rialto. I've been in the district for 27 years. One of the best programs that I've seen that the district instituted was the Think Together after-school program. I know I've spoken about it and I sent emails to you. I did fill out a slip. I don't know what happened to it. But I just wanted to bring a couple more points to your attention. I realize that it is always good for the school district and the city to work together and I can understand building those relationships. And maybe having the city doing after-school program is something that should be done. I question though, since this is the end of May, can you, the city, really pull together a program that is as good a quality as Think Together? Can they hire 135 qualified people, get them trained by educators, and be ready to start the program on August 1st? I have serious doubts about that. Do they have educators in place to help them to run the program? They're a city recreation department. My understanding is they've taken over the sports program for the school district. And considering we used to have 250 students involved in the program and they're a recreation group and yet the participation was down to between 80 and 100 for the basketball season? That's a huge drop. If they're going to run such a good program, why aren't they showing it in their area of expertise in sports? And then we're going to ask them to run a quality program in education, which is not their field of expertise? Are they going to set up the curriculum and everything? The leaders that they have? My understanding is for Think Together, the school site principals got to pick their site leaders so they, they could pick someone that had the same philosophy for their school that they did? Or is the city just going to say, "Okay, we've hired these people. You go here, here, and here," and the schools are not going to have any input? There's a lot of questions out there that is not answered. And if the city wants to partner with the school district, I think they should take the time to put in a quality program before they start up. And I don't think two months is enough time to do that. Give them a year to set it up. Maybe even during that year, set up a pilot program at one or two of the schools and try it out and get the bugs worked out before they instituted district-wide so we can keep a quality program. Thank you.
Good evening, board. This is my first time ever attending a meeting like this, but good evening. I am a parent of a third grader at Simpson Elementary. I'm also speaking on the after-school program, Think Together. The three of the five years that the program has been offered in the Rialto district, it's provided a really good quality of programming with professional, intelligent, real-life people that we as parents every day can relate to. People that are, they go through the same things we go through. Want to get home to feed their kids, have personal lives. They're not, they're not superficial. They're really there to get to know your kids. Think Together's been so beneficial for me and my family. I've actually been able to complete my criminal justice degree, bachelor's degree of criminal justice, because I have the Think Together program. Wonderful teachers. Ms. Joanna, Ms. Dee, Ms. Taylor. They all are very hands-on with my daughter. It's been days. I've been so tired working two jobs, going to school. They check her homework. You know, they make sure she get a snack. If she's having any behavioral issues or problems with her studies. Excuse me, this is really touching for me because they mean a lot to me in my life, in my daughter's life. They talk to her teacher and her teacher relays things to, to the staff at Think Together. Because once I pick her up, I can't talk to the teachers. They're already gone home. So they have a good rapport with her teacher and they have a good rapport with her. They know her. You know, they can tell if something's wrong with her. She's having a, a problem in a certain area when they take the time to do the homework with her. They can address that and they can let me know these things. This program is imperative, especially for parents who really want to be involved in their children's lives. But everybody knows it really takes two incomes. My husband and I work very hard and it's still, still really hard. And without the Think Together program, I think I would miss a lot of issues going on with my child's education. Just her, her coming out from being an introvert. She's so much more friendlier and outgoing. She's willing to try new things and raise her hand more in class because of the participation that the Think Together staff encourages them to do. They encourage them to be better, to speak out, to believe in themselves, and just go for it. So they get to have fun, but it's also a very structured work environment. So I think it's very imperative that we keep this here in the city of Rialto. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just, I just want to say that at the last board meeting, we, the board decided to allocate 20 minutes for many people who came to speak about the same subject. It's getting late. I would really like to move on to the next item to give the opportunity to executive members of the unions to give their public comment now. I have no more speaker cards and I want to move on to the next item. I apologize. No one else filled out cards. And I think we've already heard enough. We're going to be making a decision and deliberating later. I think we've already heard enough. And if it's okay with the board, I'd like to move on to the next item.
Mr. President, we would probably have to actually take a poll on the board on that because precedence has, has been set previously in other board meetings where we go over time. And, you know, listening to the public is important, as you've said before.
No, I, I agree. I, I agree, but with all due respect, I am the chairman of this board and I have to move the meeting on. We've already heard as much as we can hear regarding the same issues. We're going to be, we're going to be deciding. And I appreciate all of the public input, but there's no more cards. I was already moving on to the next subject and I just cannot allow, if it's been done in the past, we can't allow it to be done anymore moving forward to an endless, endless, you know, time for public comments. So with that said, I'm going to move on to item three. Comments from Association of Executive Board Members, please. Do we have anyone from REA?
Hi, Lisa Lindberg, President of the Rialto Education Association. Can you hear me?
Bring it up, please.
Lisa Lindberg, President of the Rialto Education Association. Good evening, board, community members, cabinet. I just want to thank the board for the employee scholarships that went out tonight. That's a wonderful thing this district does. I'm very impressed by it. And I know my teachers, speech therapists, counselors, nurses are all very impressed that their own family members can get a scholarship from this wonderful district. I think it's great. I also want to thank the board and Personnel Services for the fantastic "We Honor Our Own" extravaganza at the Orange Show. I spoke to a number of our members who had not been there before, the 15-year members. Many of them had been riffed over the years and brought back. And this was their first big event to be honored. And they were very impressed and very proud of their, of their awards. So I'd like to thank you for that as well. And welcome, Dr. Avila. I look forward to working with you. And before I, I go, I'd like to thank Cindy Stone and Kim Morris in their own different ways, extremely brave, brave women. And I think the board knows what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindberg. Next, we go on to CSEA. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak?
Good evening, honorable board, interim superintendent, associate superintendents, viewing audience. I'm Linda Silva, the president of CSEA, Rialto Chapter 203. And tonight, I'm speaking to you on behalf of all classified employees. Tonight, I want to address the board regarding information that has been supplied to you by the administration of our district, which may have been portrayed... The, the information portrays classified staff as people who can't operate at their capacity without their administrators present. You have been painted a picture of classified staff standing around for long periods of time, riding bicycles in the office, shopping on the internet, talking on cellphones, et cetera. And although these things may have an explanation, my question to you, the board, is, did the administration report to you what they did about these things? When I questioned them, they said that they weren't the administrator of those sites. Well, my comment to you, the board, is if the, if the highest administrators are not going to take care of the business at hand, then who would? The problem within this district is not just bad choices of a few classified employees. It is the fault of the administration for not correctly or properly handling these types of situations, including the administration at the highest levels. What you see before you tonight is a union strong in support of each other and we realize that if one of us does something wrong, then we all could pay the price for it. However, if the administration of this district would do their part, we would not be facing reductions to our work years. My question to the board at this time is, did these administrators that went out searching for our faults come to you singing the praises of the professional classified employees who diligently work despite their interruptions? And their spy administrations, administrators? I bet not. I would also like to point out that this school year, the administrators spent more time out of the office than in it, attending meetings or trainings. And isn't it amazing that the things were getting done in their absence? And to be boldly truthful, it was the classified staff that kept the offices and departments running smooth. For decisions to be made that will impact the school sites and departments of our districts, not to mention the students, parents, and staff, I feel that all avenues should be looked at. Not just the administrative reports that are coming to you. So with this said, I am personally inviting each of you board members to come and work in our shoes for one full day so that you can see and experience the workload of every classified employee. You would have to work the grounds, drive the buses, repair the sites, assist the staff, clean up sites, do the payroll, and pay the bills. Not to mention the things that need to be done to get ready for the next school year. We need to do student and staff half-book, handbooks, letters to parents, school schedules, staff materials, supplies, classrooms cleaned up, top and bottom. With all of this, we also have to answer every phone and take registrations for new students, send cumes and files to other schools, receive the incoming ones. And on certain things, we have only a five-day limit in which we are allowed to get materials out to other schools. So if you cut our work, work year short, this is going to lead to deadlines that can't be met, things that will not be done, and we will all be starting the school year in a deficit. We are united, as you CSEA members, and we are a team to be recognized. We have been being treated unfairly in our workloads and conditions and we will stand firm for fairness for our members. Don't judge us for the mistake of a few, but recognize us as a whole in that CSEA is a group of professional, dedicated employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. Next, we go on to Communication Workers of America. Do we have anyone here tonight from CWA?
And good evening. I'm Ms. Estruck. And I'd just like to say that was a nice presentation earlier. And congratulations to Kim Morris on her key to the district. And also, I hope you will consider the hard work that CSEA does. I've seen a lot of good workers with them. And thank you.
Next, we have anyone from Rialto School Managers Association, RSMA?
Good evening, Honorable President, Madam Vice President, Clerk Walker Martinez, and Ayala, and interim superintendent Mohammed. I am Derek Harris. I'm a proud board member with Rialto School Managers Association. We are very pleased tonight to thank Tom and his team over in Personnel for "We Honor Our Own." A lot of those were managers and we appreciate. I heard it was an awesome turnout and it's getting even bigger and better. And I know that Tom, he's got an awesome team and, you know, we're just jealous. But we also have awesome teams, so don't, you know, don't let your head swell too much. But thank you for that. We're also very happy to actually follow. I have to follow Linda. Where's she at? I wanted to thank all the classified employees on behalf of RSMA because it's Classified Employees Week, so... Timing, what can I do? And then lastly, RSMA would like to welcome Dr. Avila to the district. Thank you, sir. It'll be nice. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next, we go on to item D, public hearing. Do we have a motion to open public hearing? Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. President. I'd like to release our student board member. She's got studying to do.
With all due respect, you are free to go.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vote by board members?
Aye.
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 Any person wishing to speak on the items on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. First item's outcap adoption, fiscal year 2015, 2016. Public hearing is in regards to Education Code EC Section 52062B and 1 requires that a governing board of a school district shall hold at least one public hearing to solicit the recommendations and comments of members of the public regarding the specific actions and expenditures proposed to be included in the Local Control and Accountability Plan or annual update of the Local Control and Accountability Plan. The agenda for the public hearing shall be posted at least 72 hours before the public hearing and shall include the location where the Local Control and Accountability Plan or annual update to the Local Control and Accountability Plan will be available for public inspection. Do we have anyone here tonight wishing to speak on this particular issue? Do we have hearing none? Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. For our next item, do we have a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Second item is budget adoption, fiscal year 2015, 2016. Thank you. Motion carries. Second item is Budget Adoption, fiscal year 2015-2016. Public hearing, Education Code EC Section 52062B and 2, requires that the public meeting at which a school district governing board adopts a local control and account, accountability plan, Outcap, and adopts a budget must be held after, but not on the same day as the public meeting at which the governing board holds the required public hearings on the Outcap and the proposed budget. This requirement eliminates a governing board's previous prerogative to adopt a budget at the same public meeting at which the public hearing on the proposed budget is held, as well, as was which the public hearing on the proposed budget is held, as was historically allowed by EC Sections 42127A and 1, and 42127A2 for districts. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak here tonight on the budget adoption for the fiscal year 2015-2016?
I don't think anyone understood what you said.
I, I have to read it. I have to read it, so maybe I, maybe I could ask for some help from, from my colleagues to read every item on here.
So moved.
Mr. President, I'd like to comment on that.
Sure.
I'd like to thank all the members of, uh, the public who did come and give their input, all the, the union members, all the staff members, all the hard work from all our leadership, and, uh, it is a good plan. It is something to be very proud of, and I'd like to thank everybody for the hard work.
Hearing no public comment. Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent Calendar Items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education, Members, or the Interim Superintendent for Individual Action. Do we have a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items, Reference E through J?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we go on to Discussion Action Items K. And the first item under K is to approve Amendment Number One to the Adoption of the Spark K Through Five Physical Education Curriculum as a District's Curricular Program for Physical Education for Students in Kindergarten through Grade Five at all nineteen elementary schools. And the reference for that in the agenda is K 1.1. Do we have any discussion?
Move to approve number, uh, K one?
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item two, Approve an Agreement Number Fifteen Dash Sixteen Dash Zero Zero Five Seven with the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools to Conduct Positive Behavior Intervention Support, also known as PBIS Team Training. Do we have a first?
Move to approve?
Do we have a second?
Sec, second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have Item Three, Adopt Resolution Number Fourteen Dash Fifteen Dash Eighty, Approving the Submission of a Grant Application to Replace Sixteen of the District's Oldest School Buses with Sixteen New Natural Gas School Buses, CNG, with the Latest Safety Features for Student Transport. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Do we have discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we go to Item K Four, Approve the Renewal of the Annual Software License and Maintenance for the Synergy Student Information System Coverage with EduPoint Educational Systems, beginning July first, two thousand fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Do we have a first to approve Item K Four?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Do we have discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item K Five, Approve the Selection of One of the Service Providers for the After-School Education and Safety Program, also known as AESS, for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. Now, our options are the City of Rialto or Think Together Incorporated. For clarifications, I just would like to, uh, inform, uh, those here tonight and the public that this is an item to choose one agency or another to administer the after-school program, not to eliminate the after-school program, to decide who will administer and run the after-school program. Our options are the City of Rialto, a public agency, or Think Together, a for-profit consulting firm. Nonprofit consulting firm.
So when we make the motion, we pick the one we want to approve, right?
Right. Do we have a motion to approve Item K Five?
I, I move to approve Item K Five, to approve Think Together to remain in the district.
Do we have a second?
I have a second with discussion.
I have discussion also.
Okay, first by Ms. O'Kelly, and second by Mr. Martinez. Discussion.
Want me to go first?
Go ahead.
I, I've, I've wrote down quite a lot, a few thoughts about this, so bear with me, but they're worth hearing. I am very concerned about how we are making this extremely important decision. We have not conducted a study to see what is or is not working with our current program, Think Together. We have not received input from all of the stakeholders, students, parents, staff, and others. The input we have received has all been extremely supportive of keeping the Think Together program. As an educator, I am deeply concerned about how quickly the city's program, uh, would have to be put together. The booklet they put together and gave to us basically contains forums and online resources. Um, the lessons and activities have not been developed. The staff has not been hired or trained yet. There is no coherent focus to the program. Um, there's not a systematic, consistent training program with qualified experts in place. Uh, the city states that it will partner with credentialed teachers to create activities and lessons. Has this partnership happened? Has it been established? How many teachers are interested in doing this? When will they do it? If the activities are not organized and sequenced appropriately, and the instructors are not experts with the lessons and activities, the program will not be productive, and our kids will lose out. The city's program has never been used before. Its effectiveness is unknown. I personally do not know of any cities that run their districts after-school programs. There may be some out there. I don't know of them. Uh, no one is really in charge in the city's program. They all have other jobs they have to do, and so they have other responsibilities to focus on. Our kids will not get the attention they deserve. What if the city cannot hire the staff, this will, uh, that they want? The Think Together instructors all have at least an AA degree and have been thoroughly trained. We may wind up picking and choosing from applicants that are not going to be excellent resources for our kids, and it leads to a huge turnover in staff, which leads to inconsistency, which, again, hurts the kids. Um, the Think Together program can and does focus completely on the after-school program and our students. It is an academic program that meets the needs of all students. It is not just babysitting or keeping kids in a safe place. As a working mother who had to depend on daycare and after-school programs, I understand how the parents who have come to us the last three meetings to speak, and the teachers, how they feel. You don't want just a program to keep your kids at. You want a program that you know you can trust, you believe in, and that is doing good things for your children. We heard from several parents about the kids' increase in achievement, how they were doing better in school. The parents loved how the kids had their homework done. The teachers loved it. The teachers loved that their rooms were left neat and clean and not a mess, as, as had been done before. Um, you know, I just, it's Think Together is doing great, and everyone seems to love it. Why trade something that is doing so well for the unknown? As the saying goes, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. In addition, if the city takes over the after-school program, it will be a financial loss to the district. First, the district would lose the one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars of indirect cost that is part of the grant. That money would go directly to the city. In addition, the city, uh, is expecting a six hundred thousand dollar hit to their own budget to implement this program, and they are planning on asking the school district to pay half of that, which would be three hundred thousand dollars. So we lose the one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars already, and now we're supposed to dish out another three hundred thousand to give our program away to the city, which, to me, makes no sense. That's a total of four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars that we would be out for no reason when we have a program that is working beautifully. In all the years that we have been using the Think Together program, not one penny has been paid out of district funds for that program. Think Together covered the complete cost with the grant and their partnerships, which donate sums of money, and that, if there were any gaps, that's how Think Together filled them in. We have never paid a penny. Why should we now go around and pay four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars? I welcome the opportunity to partner with the city in a variety of ways, and I'm hoping we can create more partnerships. However, to approve the city's after-school program at this time would be fiscally and educationally irresponsible of us. Think Together is the best option for our students and our district. Thank you.
Ms., Ms. O'Kelly raised some very good concerns. Um, perhaps, uh, if somebody from the city could answer a couple of the questions, statements that were made. Um, you know, with all due respect, I understand a lot of employees from Think Together here tonight, but I'd like to ask you to please, uh, be respectful.
Mr. President.
I got a question, just, just one second.
Could I, I want to say, because...
Point of order, Mr. Martinez.
He wanted to have discussion.
I know, but, but she raised...
They could answer the same questions at the same time instead of come back up.
Well, can I ask them the first two questions? A statement was made that the city was gonna, uh, be out six hundred thousand dollars with this program if the city is chosen to run the program for the school district, that you guys would be out six hundred thousand dollars and expect the school district to pay three hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
I am not aware of any request to have the district pay, cover any, any portion of that. That, that request has not been made. Um, I think it had been suggested as our council was looking at the cost, the, the actual cost to, to get the program started when we're talking about, um, training those individuals in a, in a short amount of time. We would bear the cost, and we, we were prepared to present that, that option to the City Council next week. But as far as the, the initial costs, six hundred thousand dollars, yes, we, that, those are real costs. Um, there has been no formal request to have the district participate in any of that, though.
But if you would like, I don't think we would, no. I mean, that's one of the things, and, and, and real quickly, uh, I'll talk a little bit about past, present, and future. We ran an after-school program for the school district some years ago, then it switched over with the decision by administration and by the Board to go to Think Together, uh, to do that. Uh, I can tell you this, and you guys know me well, you are not going to hear me get up here and say anything derogatory about Think Together. That's not the way I operate. That's not the way the city does. And so we're not going to say anything about that. To answer the question regarding whether we can do it, you know, we can. When it was given to us the first time, we had thirty days to put it together. So sixty days is actually twice as much as we had originally the first time that we did it. But we are quite capable, uh, to do that. I take pride in my staff, George, Julio, and the people to do that. Uh, because it's under the Community Services and Recreation Department, I don't want anybody to think that we wouldn't be able to meet the guidelines and requirements to provide it. We can. We, we would do it. And I'll just leave it with this tonight from the city administrator. Uh, if we had spent six hundred thousand dollars, we would do that. If I asked you for three hundred, you could tell me no. I'd still commit to the six hundred to do it. But if, that might be something that we could partner with and do. But if not, we're committed to do the program and spend the money, uh, to be able to do that. But I, I also want to, from tonight, whatever decision is made by, by the Board and the district, uh, tomorrow, if you decide to go with the, the city, we are committed to make it occur and make it happen to meet the August fifth deadline for schools to open, uh, for the next session, to be able to do that. If tonight you decide not to, I'm okay with that. I'll go back and continue to work with, as Vice President O'Kelly said, a number of projects with the city and the school district and partner with to do that we've done in the past, will continue to do, and will continue to do in the future. We'll do that. And I'll go back and do the hundred and five things that I've got on my plate to be able to do, minus one, to be able to do that. But I, I really wanted to just make it clear. I'm not, we're not up here to say anything. We were asked, we were asked by staff, I'm gonna make this real clear, by administration to put this proposal together and present it. And we're okay with that, if, whatever direction it decides to go. So, uh, we stand behind it. We understand it, and we are committed to make it happen if you choose to do that. If not, then we move on, on May twenty-first, on to other things, when I do my budget workshop, to move on to the two thousand fifteen, sixteen, uh, with my council and, and my staff. So I, I appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak, to be able to do that, and we'll answer any other questions you might have. But, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to submit the proposal and for your consideration on it. But once again, we appreciate, uh, you know, what Think Together's done, and, you know, if you want to continue with that, we understand that, and I, you know, we would, uh, just keep our proposal in hand to be able to look at and things like that. But I don't want to get into a, you know, an argument or create some type of divisive attitude George does, and Julio does, and none of our council do with the district or with the program that's operating. So we're, we are, we are good, whatever way you do it. We are here to support the school district. I've talked to Dr. Avila and things to be able to do that. We want to build a partnership and continue to do that, whether it's this, whether it's a dozen and one other things, we're gonna do it. We are committed to do that. You have my word on that, for my commitment to the city and to this district, and so does my staff.
I, I just, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Story. Um, I, I just want to, um, say that, you, you guys can take a seat.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you. Um, I, I just want to say that, um, this is not the first year that the Board considers, uh, switching to, um, have somebody else administer the after-school program. Um, as a matter of fact, the previous leadership, uh, the previous leadership even spoke publicly at our public board meetings about making the switch not to the city, but to in-house, to take the program over and administer it in-house by the district. That was a while back. Last year, the city was asked to submit a proposal because there was an interest on behalf of the city to come back to administer the program once again, as they did years ago. And I'm not going to get into whether or not they were good or whether they were bad. All I've heard is the same thing about the city program when it was back then, same thing I hear about Think Together now, that there was room for improvement, yeah, but people were happy with it. But I would never, I've never heard anyone specifically tell me from the community or parents that the city did a horrible job, that the city did a nasty daycare babysitting job. I never heard that personally, other than from this Board and people that want Think Together to stay. I've never heard those allegations. As a matter of fact, we had a parent who worked for the city program when they did it, who said that the program was good. The city was never given the opportunity to make improvements. It was just switched out. Um, I believe in the City of Rialto. I believe in the staff and in the officials of the City of Rialto. I think the fact that the city wants to partner with the school district to rebuild that program and make it even better, I think is an awesome opportunity for the school district to partner with our, with our neighbors, with our community partners, and serving the same people. This is not about anything personal or having anything personal against anyone. But with that said, with that said, as a taxpayer, as a resident of this community, I would... I would hate, I would hate to make the switch for a program that I believe can be ran better, not ran better, can provide more for the kids, because it's the kids who we need to focus on, not the employees of Think Together, not the employees of the city of Rialto. It's the kids. The city of Rialto has a fire department, their own fire department, not outsourced, they have their own police force, they have parks and rec, they have community centers, they have a lot, obviously, they have a lot more resources, and could probably, I honestly believe they could probably give a lot more for the program because of their resources and manpower. But with that said, I understand that the time is short, I've heard loud and clear the concerns of our employees and the parents, but what bothers me the most is putting that $600,000 burden of taxpayers' money on our city. So after hearing confirmation about that, I just can't support making the switch at this time. Maybe the city can go back, huddle, football huddle, and reorganize, and put together another proposal down the road, but after hearing confirmation of that $600,000 burden, and then, I know, I don't think anyone on this board wants to cough up $300,000, which would be the right thing to do, but I don't think anyone wants to cough it up if right now we don't have to. So with that said, I just would like to say that if nobody has anything else, I just suggest we take the vote.
Mr. Martinez.
You want to steal street, Mr. Martinez?
Yes, and I gave you the courtesy of not calling the point of order. I'm angry that you did not take it in appropriate turn around, but I will just continue with what I have to say. I was contacted by many people, including people on the city council. They said the city would have to pay $600,000 as their share of the grant. I, like you, Mr. Montez, President Montez, feel that I would be a bad partner, I would throw the city under the bus if we did not help to subsidize, just giving it to the city, knowing that they could not afford the $600,000, nor could we. My take is, we could provide special education services cheaper than subsidizing the city's share of the grant, whether it's $300,000, $100,000, or $600,000. The city is not required to provide special education services. Parents have already begun registering students with Think. This item has not gone to the city council, so they could vote no. The city is not ready to accept students as of today. The city cannot afford to accept the grant, knowing the $600,000 share. The parents overwhelmingly want to keep Think. Many of these are single parents. The community members, the Think staff would lose jobs, these are community members. Parents probably would have transportation issues. In, here's how adamant City Councilman Ed Palmer was. He said, matter of fact, he would move at the city council to give us $100,000 to keep the program. Okay, I call for a roll call vote.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I just want to add, you know, again, I believe in the city, I trust that they would do an awesome job, but at this time, I just wouldn't want to burden them with that cost. And I'm not going to say anything negative about anybody, but I do want to say, I do want to apologize to the city for some, you know, negative comments that were made about the city, about the city's program when it was here, but at this time, we just, we just, I just don't think it's, it would be good to burden them with that cost, or the district with that cost. And Mr. Yalla, you had some comments?
Probably at this time, it would be wise if I didn't say anything, because it doesn't take much to count one, two, three, and know what direction we're moving. But I do want to share a few thoughts that I have. You know, when I think about how I learned going to school, it wasn't always by a college professor, even though I was sitting in the class. Sometimes it was an older sibling, cousin, relative, an uncle, a neighbor, they didn't have titles, other than just, they had a heart to care, to share what they knew to make my life easier. With that said, I have the program description from California Department of Education, it's a grant, ACE's program. It's written kind of vague, and that's, I guess that's the part that bothers me, because I don't see any requirements here for taking care of all the kids. See, that's the part that troubles me a little bit. I even took the time to call the California Department of Education, get their opinion, and they called me back right in the middle of our board meetings, which I couldn't take the call, but that's okay, tomorrow's another day. Point I'm trying to make is, if this is written vague, and they're not mandating that we take care of all our kids, for example, the gifted and talented, but then what's at the other end? Kids of special needs.
Yes.
One of the problems with helping the kids in special needs is always in our wallets, because there's different set of rules. So one of the questions I had for them was, can we enroll students without an IEP after school? Wow, if we could do that, wow. According to some of the requirements that they have written here, enrichment programs designed to assist kids that are underperforming, give them opportunities in the arts, in the music, extra physical activities, it goes on and on. I've seen these kids before at the local church, when they were fed first, and they were quiet, then they looked around, then the music started. When I listened to the music, little at a time, they started coming up in front of everybody, and they started dancing, because they trusted those in attendance. They were happy children. Wow, that, that was awesome. I know we could help these kids. So I took the liberty to call some of the city officials, and they said, don't give up, Mr. Yalla, he says, we're with you. There's no guarantees in life, sometimes you have to be bold, you have to find ways to be creative. You know, it may cost us a little more if we have to have IEPs, but what else are we gonna do with our profits? You know? So you go, Mr. Yalla, and you see what you can do. And I said, thank you, because if you would've said you can't help, then what's the point of trying to pursue a dream that's gonna fail? I'm hoping by sharing these words tonight, regardless who we go with here, and I have a pretty good idea who we're going, and I'm happy, we're not here to have anybody lose jobs, lose status. I just hope that we can find ways to help all our kids, and if we need to help you with additional resources, if we need to start a foundation of some kind, maybe we start with 10 kids that need an IEP. So that's the way I'd like to close, with that challenge to whoever takes over the program, that we're not gonna run any faster than the slowest runner. Thank you so much.
Any more, any more discussion or comments? Then let's call for the vote.
Roll call vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
The motion was, the motion was to approve Think Together, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so now, all in favor?
I'm asking for a roll call vote.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye for Think.
Mr. Yalla?
Aye for the city of Rialto.
Aye for Think Together.
Ms. Walker?
Aye for Think Together.
And?
It's okay, it's okay.
Aye for Think Together. Next, we go on to item K6, approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel, AHP, stipulated case numbers 14-15-60, 14-15-57, 14-15-51. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly and Ms. Walker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we go to item L, comments from the interim superintendent.
Thank you, President Montez. Tomorrow, we have our Eisenhower Senior Award Night scheduled at 6:00 PM at Eisenhower Gymnasium. Please be there, support our students, and you'll be proud seeing our talent, our students in our high school. Please plan to be there. Again, tomorrow at 6:00 PM. On May 13, we have our annual employee health fair, it was well-attended, it was one of the outstanding event. Many of our employees attended, and we have all the partners of our, participate in the health fair. This was a great event. June 1st and June 2nd, we have a middle school promotions, which is scheduled at Cairo High School. On Monday, June 1st, our Coe Middle School is scheduled at 4:30 PM, and JU Middle School is 6:30 PM. Tuesday, June 2nd, Frisbee is scheduled at 3:00 PM, Rialto Middle School at 5:00 PM, and Casara at 7:00 PM. Please plan to attend and support our students, this is our Rialto Middle School Promotions event. I'd like to see you all, those event, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. Next, we go to comments from members of the Board of Education, and we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Martinez.
Let me remove the mint that I just put in my mouth. Okay, thank you, President Montez. You know, it's, it's been a long day, it's been a long meeting, but a democratic society really can get noisy and be in turmoil, and many, many things can be understood or misunderstood, and I just want to let the community know, I believe in this board. We may not always agree. I believe in our staff, I believe in our parents, but most of all, I believe in our kids. And they deserve everything, and I'm going to ask the board that we look into whatever support we can give to special ed after school, as well as GATE. I don't know what the cost is, but we will never know if we never look. So again, and because it's been long, I'm just going to say, students, staff, and community, that's where I have to draw the line, and sometimes, sometimes if I don't have it in front of me, written down, community, staff, students can get jumbled during discussions. So that's why I'm a governance kind of guy, and I'm a list maker, if you haven't noticed. Thank you, President Montez.
Thank you, Board Member, Mr. Martinez. Next, we go to Board Member, Mr. Joseph Yalla.
Thank you, President Montez. I want to first congratulate Think on the contract. I know you'll do a good job, and I hope we find ways to be a little more creative. We just probably need to talk with our staff. We have a great team here, and they're creative themselves, and we want to thank the city too, also, for their efforts, and so, kind of like taking one for the team, you heard them tonight, those are our city people coming up here saying, if it costs us $600,000, they're gonna do it anyway, because why? Because they care about us. Wow, that's powerful. And it's okay when we disagree. Democracy sometimes gets noisy. It is absolutely imperative that we have a voice to share, right, wrong, or indifferent, and it's not always easy up here, but it's okay, it's important. And I want to just reiterate a quote here, I may not have it perfect, but boy, it was powerful. Having a J O B is one thing, but having J O Y is truly a gift. And I do have joy tonight, because you're here, we're here, and we're gonna get through this together and keep moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member, Mr. Joe Yalla. Next, we go to our board clerk, Mistina Walker.
And I'd just like to say, thank you again for all those of you who have been with us for several hours past our normal time, including my fellow board members and the staff of the district. Just to really say, this is still, no matter what, we are going into a new era, and no matter what, we are going to have growing pains, and there are gonna be some hiccups and some bumps on the new things that are gonna happen in this district, whether that be an after-school program, whether that be a new teacher assignment, new principal assignment, new superintendent, there are things that are gonna be happening, and some of us are gonna love everything about it, then you'll know those people are the ones who are crazy, and then there are people who are not gonna like anything about it, those are the ones who will say, probably they'll move to another district, and then there are those who will say, I'll gripe for about a minute or two and say, now, what do we do next? Right? And so, just in this whole, you know, couple of weeks or several weeks around, who is gonna be our after-school provider, those are those things that have come to light for us to see and to work through. The bottom line is, what's the best thing for the students? And we have a lot of opportunity here, July 1st is gonna come around, you know, immediately, we'll have our new leadership here, we'll have, August 5th will come around even quicker than that, and so we'll have a new school day, and the bottom line is, will we be ready to move forward on August 5th with bright smiles, warm hugs, the whole thing, and me as a mom, happy, school is starting again, you know, with a foot on my kid's back, pushing her out the door, you know? But honestly, are we gonna be ready to do that? And I'm glad that we looked at, you know, the one thing about it is, as we look at new changes and things, the basic thing is, what is our capacity to make things happen effectively and with fidelity, and in that timeframe, and do we have that capacity? And about the after-school program, it's just about, do we have the capacity to do what we need to do, and the timeframe that we need to do it effectively? And so, the decision tonight, I'm glad the board, we all moved to what's in the best interests of the students at that time, and I think for our district as well. I'm very pleased to have, not only I received emails, text messages, phone calls, you know, several emails, you know, third-party emails, you know, all kinds of things, and was able to go visit a couple of the sites that have Think Together as the after-school project that were not any of the people who had contacted me, or were not any of the schools who had contacted me, to see if holistically, does this thing really happen there? And no, the two sites that I visited, it didn't exactly happen exactly like there was presented there, but there were no big things that, you know, blaring things like, oh my God, all the kids are, you know, running around. running around with shotguns," or, you know, something like that, you know. That are water pistols. You know, the super, those things, right? So that was a great thing to see, that really consistently, there was a program that was available for students to be there after school, to have a time to sit and do their homework, and whatever happened after that particular time. And so that's all I needed to make sure that that is happening, because the timeframe is really was my concern. And so for us to be able to move forward with the capacity we have, in the timeframe we have, to be effective for our start-school date, those are the bearing, all the bearings that I had to look forward to. So again, thank you for everybody who participated in that engagement process around the decisions that we have to make here at the board, to help us to make the great decisions that we have, and the input from there. The lighter note, I participated on this Sunday. I went to, UC Riverside has a partnership with several school districts in the area around the early academic opportunity program, which is the EOP for high school students. And so several of the school districts in the area, Rialto is one of them, and all three of our high schools participate. And so they had their honor graduation this past Sunday, and I was there representing the board. We had, oh, God, I don't even know how many kids, but we had so many kids represented from Carter, Eisenhower, and Rialto High School. I was a very proud board member. Every last one of those students was going on to, there was only one student that was named that was not going to a four-year university, and that wasn't even one of our kids. That was somebody from Moreno Valley. So I was so excited. I'm like, "Yeah, our kids." So just again, about the excellence and the great things that happen in our district every day, all day, there's somewhere and someplace to celebrate with somebody in our district all the time. So again, Rialto, thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with everybody in this next new coming academic year, and our last board meeting, which will be very soon, very happy for that. And see you guys in two weeks. Thank you.
You're already waiting for, waiting for board meetings to be over? And you're a newbie.
Yeah, well, I got kids too, so.
You know, when I ran for the school board, and after my entire career's been here in Rialto, my only agenda and my only commitment was to make decisions that are in the best interest of our students. We'll do that till my deathbed, probably. But, and I strongly feel that this board made the best decision for our students tonight. I believe in the city. I definitely want to work with them on different projects and things like that. It's just, this was not the time nor the project to be going into financially or educationally. One of the ways I'm working with the city, actually, I'm a member of the West Valley Water District Drought Action Partnership. Mr. Story and I were there last week, and wow, there's some scary stuff going on with our water. And a lot of changes have to be made there. And we're talking about how it's going to affect our school facilities and, you know, our homes. They want to get these signs that say, "Brown is the new green." I'm like, "Mmm." I don't want to put that on my yard. But we'll have to see how all that goes. But I mean, that's exciting, and, you know, it's going to definitely affect the schools, so. I also attended the STEM Bowl Middle School Competition, which was really exciting to see these kids just having a ball with these STEM activities and winning lots of trophies and prizes at the end. We honor our own, was wonderful as always. It's just one of the best things, I think, that we do in this district, and really enjoyed that. I went, so far, I've been to Carter High and Rialto High's Senior Awards Night. For people who aren't high school people, the two most important nights in high school are senior awards and graduation. And it's just, the senior awards, this is, represents 12 years of education, and these kids are the cream of the crop. And we have people from the community and other different organizations presenting scholarships to them. And it's just one of the best feelings to be there and watch these kids get some much-needed money that will help them with their college expenses. So Eisenhower is tomorrow night, so I will be there with bells on. And I think that's all for tonight. Thank you all for hanging in here so late. We really appreciate it, and have a good couple of weeks.
Thank you, Vice President, Ms. Nancy O'Kelly. Last but not least, I'm going to make this really short. I just, again, want to thank the city for their comprehensive proposal. After thinking about all of the things included in the proposal, and to the extent of the way that they would like to implement and service the program, I can see how it would be costly, somewhat costly to them to implement such a program. But I do have to say that perhaps the time factor is also of much concern. But they did, and I do believe, I do believe them when they told us that they would have been able to do it in time for the new school year. And again, I just want to thank the city of Rialto and all the hard work that they put into their proposal. But with that said, I just can't bear to put a $600,000 burden on them. And maybe this is something that they can bring back at a future time, somewhere down the road. And Mr. Martinez, I do not, it was not my intention to make you angry, but as far as I'm concerned, I don't think I was out of order. I asked a question in regards to one of our colleagues' concerns. And when you were board chairman, you ran the meetings your way. And me as board chairman, I have the right to run the meetings my way. So I, you know, I did not mean to make you upset. And I just want to thank everybody for all of their input, really, the parents, the teachers. I think the biggest concern that I heard from the last board meeting was parents being told, or parents under the assumption that this board was going to abolish the after-school program. And that was never the case. I just want to reiterate that. Think Together, I have nothing negative to say about you or your program. And welcome for another year with our school district. And I hope that you continue to work with our staff and continue to work as hard as you can for our kids. Because after all, I'm going to be honest with you, the kids are the number one priority. And I appreciate all of Think Together employees filling up our board meeting here tonight. But with all honesty, those kids are the most important to us and to this district. So thank you again for, thank you again for being here and sharing your concerns with us. I want to also congratulate, I believe we've broken in tonight, our new superintendent.
He's all weary.
Welcome, welcome to the Rialto Unified School District Board Meetings. At a different time, he's no longer a virgin superintendent. He's been broken into our meetings this late into the evening. At a different time, at a different place, meetings used to go even longer. But we've made great strides in making progress. And as you can see here tonight, everybody can see here tonight, you know, we might not always agree on everything. But at the end of the day, we find a way to respect each other and agree to disagree and move forward in hopes of what's best for the kids of this district. And I think tonight was a great example of that. And again, I want to thank everyone that came out tonight for our meet and greet to welcome Dr. Avila here to this district. It was an awesome event. Kudos again to Nutrition Services, Cindy Stone and all her people. They did an awesome job. As a matter of fact, I'm going to go check if there's any leftovers right now. I didn't get enough earlier. But, no, no, seriously, they'll thank, I want to thank them. And everyone that was involved, Saeda Joffrey, Ricardo Carlos from the Communications Department, all of the staff here at the PDC. After all, they did host it here, Dolores Huerta, Sister Chavez, and not just the meet and greet, but the board meeting. So I want to thank all of the staff members involved in making tonight's board meeting and the meet and greet possible. I want to thank all the dignitaries that came out and support us. Couple times there, I saw people cutting into the line in front of people to shake hands with Dr. Avila. And, you know, people waiting in the long line were kind of angry. But I apologize if I cut in a couple times to take a selfie with him. It was an awesome event. It was an awesome event, and I think we couldn't have done a better job. And I do want to thank Mr. Martinez because it was his idea, and it was his leadership to host today's meet and greet at this place, at this time. And I think the board, I think the board commends you for that effort. And with that, let's go home. Can I get a?
I moved to it during the meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.